Roll call. Michael Bullier.
Michael Bullier, Hebron.
Michael Sharon.
Michael Sharon, Hebron.
Joseph Claddy.
Joe Claddy, Hebron.
Kirsten Erlinson.
Kirsten Erlinson.
Pam Farrington.
Pam Farrington, Marlboro.
Carrie Ferlino. Drew Golfen.
Drew Golfen, Marlboro.
Gabe Marks.
Gabe Marks, Hebron.
Amy Romancheck.
Amy Romancheck, Marlboro.
Scott Soye.
Scott Soye, Andover.
Heather Summer. Oliver Siraj. Brianna Adupacu. And Samantha Maxwell, Grand Middle School. Please rise to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
Alright, perfect. So we're going to head to public comments. Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro community engagement and attendance at board public meetings is welcomed. The public comment section, segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the board may rec- receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the board is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the board is not permitted to engage in discussion of the comments presented. Is there anyone present that'd like to speak?
Thank you. Good evening. Ethan Spinelli, 22, Riverdale, Marlboro. REA President.
Ethan, would you mind going on?
Oh, I don't know.
That'd be great. Appreciate that.
Oh, sorry.
Ethan Spinelli, 22, Riverdale, Marlboro. REA President. Coming back from April break, teachers are ready to get back to work. Everyone's excited. We also know the rest of the year will be flying by rapidly. And I hope all of you enjoyed your April vacation yourselves, and we are looking forward to the rest of the year. I also do want to recognize, some of you may have heard, we lost Scott Butson today, our IT coordinator. We got an email about his resignation. We would just like to say that we are sorry. He was a great asset to the Ram faculty, and he was there anytime and anywhere we needed him, and it's certainly going to be a loss to the Ram community, and I just want to publicly thank him for all his work that he done for Ram. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any else in person, or anyone online? No? Alright, next is add, delete agenda items. Do you have anything to add? Alright, we'll go ahead to the student representative report.
Welcome back from April break. I know that the middle school students enjoyed their time off from school last week. Towards the end of March, any middle school eastern regional musicians had their concert. I know I had a great time meeting new people and preparing the music to be performed. Everyone who participated enjoyed the experience. The last week of March, the student council held a food drive and a school dance. The food drive was very successful, and I heard that the dance was a fun event to attend. Eighth graders fundraising efforts for the upcoming Boston field trip finished in late March, and permission slips were sent home prior before April vacation. The eighth graders are looking forward to this year's end of the year school field trip. At the beginning of April, the sixth grade students from all three towns visited Ram Middle School to get tours of the school, and got to ask eighth graders questions, who were on the question and answer panel. The Wednesday before April break, the Ram Middle School Jazz Band participated in a jazz festival in Glastonbury. Four of our musicians received awards, and the Jazz Band saxophone section received an award for being the best saxophone section of the night. And finally, the Thursday before April break, many music and art students participated in Ram Middle School's annual coffeehouse. There were many music, music performances, and there was an art show where many students' artworks was displayed. It was a fun night for everyone who attended.
Thank you. I don't have anything to report. Alright, we'll head to yours.
So I could jump in. I also want to just say, we are in an exciting part of the school year. Spring break has passed us. I said to Amy right before the meeting started, I said, "We've got about two months left." She said, "Thirty-eight days," and that's teacher for you. She has it down. I'm sure that's good. So thirty-eight days of school left before summer, so there is a lot to do, as Mr. Spinelli said, prior to, prior to the June thirteenth graduation. I want to, oh, the first thing I want to say is, I'm going to just pass these out. We have the latest edition of The Rambler, which is the student-created magazine periodical that comes out several times throughout the school year. I just want to make sure that board members have copy of The Rambler to peruse through at their leisure. Ms. Clifton and Ms. Ozwicki doing an awesome job with The Rambler, and it's always good to highlight the great work that they're doing with their students. I want to congratulate Ram High School students Tyler Fitzgibbons and Pippi Thompson, who were recently recognized at the Connecticut Association of Schools Awards Banquet Held at AquaTurf, CAS. The Connecticut Association of Schools annually honors two outstanding seniors from member schools who excel in the performing or visual arts, and demonstrates strong scholarship and leadership qualities. Joining Tyler and Pippi at the banquet was Penny, the principal of the high school, Beth Fisher, our arts curriculum coordinator, Shelley Ozwicki, one of our art teachers, and Chris Robinson, one of our music staff, music teaching staff. Ram High School Band and Choir also recently showcased their talents on several occasions over the, a very truncated short period of time. The spring concert was held on Thursday, April third. It was a phenomenal show. The following day, they performed, we had students from Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro actually come to the auditorium, and they performed an in-house concert for the sixth graders. It showcases the talents, and it also was an opportunity for our music teachers to start recruiting future Ram musicians, which is always a good thing to do. That weekend, they traveled to Boston, where they participated in what is called an adjudication. I am not a musician, but I had to look up. It's where you are judged by a panel of experts in your field, and are, not surprisingly, our students performed phenomenally. The band students placed first in their division, and the choir placed second in their division up at the event. And I think this, as great as that is, one of the things that I think I was most proud about, and I think you will join me in this as well, is the entire music department was recognized with the Esprit de Corps Good Citizen Award, which is given to the group who shows kindness in addition to musicianship. So that is a really cool acknowledgement of how great our students are. The board may recall that earlier this year, Sherry Pelletier, who runs our Future Problem Solver group, came and did a presentation at our student program Spotlight, and talked about the work that she does with our students, and the students talked about what they do during the Future Problem Solver competitions. Sherry recently sent us an email and informed us that the state awards were announced at the end of March, and our students, not surprisingly, did exceptionally well. Some of the students participating were Trevor Hooker, Stella Bouleter, Izzy Creamer, Patrick Wolfgang, Ben Creamer, Ben Seer, Elizabeth Sabo, I might be mispronouncing that, I apologize, Juliet Manthorn, Will DeCarcey, Winston Greve, Lila Hassan, CN Hurley, and Alia Quinto. That's a range of students from seventh grade to twelfth grade, because the middle school and high school students will compete at the same time. They won several awards. Trevor Hooker won first place for the Global Issues Individual Award. And so he's been invited to internationals as a result of that win. We, we had a team of students get second place for Global Issues in the senior division. We had a team of students get second place for Global Issues in the middle division, third place for Global Issues in the middle division, and first place for art in the senior division, and first place presentation of ideas, a presentation of an action plan in the senior division, like, basically swept the competition, as that sounds like to me. So, again, super exciting to share those students' success, and we congratulate them. Just piggybacking off of what Samantha said, the middle school coffeehouse was Thursday, the tenth of April. It was a great night showcasing our middle school students' fine and performing arts skills. It's a, it's a lead-up and a little bit of a precursor to another great night celebrating the arts here in our community, which is our Evening of the Arts. Ticket order forms have been sent out to the community. Board members, if you desire to go, I think I sent a communication out last week saying, "If you're interested in going, just let us know, and we can make sure that we get a ticket for you, and also make sure we get you down for the future choice that you have." If you've never had a chance to come, I would highly encourage you to try and make that event. That is going to be held on May twenty ninth. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Now we'll do the student in program spotlight.
So I'm thrilled that Tressa Giordano from AHM is here this evening. As the board knows, we have a longstanding partnership with AHM, who provides tremendous resources, not only to, to Ram, but to the larger community of Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro. And Tressa is the executive director, and she's going to talk a little bit about some of the work that AHM does, and also talk specifically about one of the programs, which is our SOAR program. So thanks, Tressa, for being here.
Thank you for having me. It's been a little bit since I've been to a Board of Ed meeting. So I wanted to first just give a quick overview of AHM. If you're not familiar with us, we are a nonprofit that we serve as the Youth Service Bureau for Andover, Hebron, Marlboro, and Columbia. We've been in operation for over forty years, and have had great relationships with the schools through that time. I did bring some of our brochures and catalogs, so you can kind of peruse that and see the whole scope of programming and services that we offer the community. We do a lot around clinical work. We have an outpatient therapeutic program at our office, a lot around prevention, which we'll talk about in a couple of seconds. We also have the Family Resource Center. We have a preschool right here on the Ram campus, which is amazing. We also have a space over at Gilead Hill. We coordinate the project graduation event that we host for your seniors every year. We also host the Juvenile Review Board for the region. So we are very busy. We have a staff of about thirty, and on average, we, we reach about twelve thousand residents a year. We have AHM staff at all schools, so we have two full-timers here, one at the middle school and one at the high school. Then we also have a fairly new, but a really exciting internship program, where we have interns from the University of Connecticut. So we're very proud of the work we do and are honored to continue to do that work for our community. Today I brought along Emma here. Emma is a student here at Ram. She is part of our SOAR youth group, and she's also a board member at AHM, representing the youth. We also have Carol Roche online. I know that she wasn't feeling so great today, but she is online. Carol, along with Ashley Parks, our prevention coordinator, oversees our SOAR youth group. And this year, we had an opportunity through CREC, as well as the State Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, DMS, to apply for a five thousand dollar grant for students to create a media project around youth gambling awareness. So we were really excited. The students put together a proposal. I'm sure Emma will tell you a little bit about that process. But we were one of ten schools chosen to do that, and they did an amazing job. And so you'll get to see the video in a, in a moment. The process at which they had to go through to present, they had to put together a pitch and a script and present that before it was approved, before they could actually make their video. And then they decided to host a Kids vs. Cops event here at Ram, and that's where they premiered the video. So they worked very hard, and so I guess, are we able to watch the video? We'll watch the video first.
I heard it's supposed to be a close game. Where'd you hear that? I thought it was supposed to be a blowout. It's Oliver Insta, like, all the sports analysts are talking about it.
I can't believe they're up by six, and there's only like thirty seconds left to the game.
That was crazy. My parents are gonna be so mad. What, I didn't know your parents were that big a sports fan? No, you don't understand what I just did. I thought this game was a shit thing. What do you mean? I just lost five hundred dollars on that game. How? I used my parents' card to place an online bet on the game. I thought it was a guarantee. Ain't it illegal to bet at our age? Yeah, it says right here, I think you're, uh, you have to be twenty-one or older to do that, and it's also illegal to misrepresent yourself at your age when creating online sports betting accounts. I'm just gonna have to bet on tomorrow night's game and try and get my parents' money back. You shouldn't do that. Let's go talk to your parents. They get this out.
A bet you might regret. Online sports betting is everywhere we look. It's on commercials during the games we watch, and advertised on social media. But online sports betting isn't for everyone, and doesn't come without risk. In CT, you need to be twenty-one years or older to legally place an online sports bet, and eighteen and older to participate in fantasy sports contests.
So Emma, do you want to talk about why you chose that topic?
Yeah, so we had chosen that topic because we thought it was really important to talk about the problems of youth gambling and how could it, and how it could affect you, and like, how it's like bad for you. And we all came together and thought of that idea, and did the script, and we made sweatshirts that said, "Bet You Might Regret." And we think this is a good thing, because it shows you how it could like affect you, or how it could be bad for you, and how you shouldn't do it and learn from it. And if you do do it, you can also get help.
Yeah, I was really proud of them because they chose a topic in the timeframe of when this premiered was in March, around March Madness, when you know, everybody's talking about their different bets that they might be making for March Madness and their brackets. And so I think in a time, you know, of year when it was super relevant, they were pretty brilliant in picking that topic. At the end of March, there was over a hundred people in attendance. They, they had a virtual youth gambling awareness project showcase, so all ten videos were shown. We had our Ram students online during that. So it was really fun just to see what other schools had created as well. It could be any type of media. Most people did go with the video, but it could be graphic, it could be a website, anything within the graphic arts. So I don't know. It looks like Carol, I don't know if she has anything she wants to add. She's got the sweatshirt on too.
Yep. Proud sponsor, SOAR. It was just a great experience having all the kids work together, come up with the script, and, you know, go to practice and do this video, and be so dedicated, and to go out and go to the basketball game, and, you know, really represent SOAR in such a positive way. And we're, we're always looking for new members and people to come join us. So if any of the students in the middle school or the high school want to try out SOAR at the remainder of this year or next year, we're looking for more members to do great things for our Ram community and the community of Hebron, Marlboro, and Andover.
Thanks. Did anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So the, the event with a hundred people that showed up, was that people from around the community, or was it mostly students that?
So for that virtual showcase, it was members from DMS and CREC who funded the event, and then students that had made the videos, as well as their advisors. So that wasn't a meeting open to the public per se, but it was really cool to see everybody's videos. And I believe on the DMS website, you can go and look at our video, as well as the others that, that were created.
Is there any way to get the word out to families, to parents, to, for their awareness as well? I think it's a
Yeah, so now that we've passed the showcase portion of it, we'll be able to share the video on AHM's on media channels. We, you know, we have all of the permissions from the students' parents to do that. I believe too, the video has been or will be shown in some of the health classes as well. So yeah, I think it's a really powerful project to have students teaching other students, and maybe even other adults that, you know, might be tempted or struggling with, you know, gambling addiction. You know, it is a real thing, and I, I think we've noticed at the state level, you know, especially with online betting fantasy sports, you know, there has been an increase, especially in youth. It is unfortunately pretty easy just to take your parents' credit card and create a, a profile, and sometimes, you know, that can be a very slippery slope. You know, you make a bet, they give you incentives to put more money down, all of a sudden, things don't go your way. It can, it can be a really scary situation. So just making that aware and teaching kids, you know, you have some supports around you that can help you if you get into a bad situation.
Yeah, I think it's a great topic, great idea.
Yeah. Very good. I'll leave these for you all. Some light readings tonight. I'm sure you'll watch too. Thank you. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent portion of the agenda.
So on the consent agenda, there's a few different things. The, the first three things are just approval of minutes from different meetings that we've had, and the public hearing that we've had recently. Another item under the consent agenda is enclosure nine point four, which is approval of a request for an extended leave of absence. And I explained this in the, in the memo to the board. We have a staff member at the high school who's requesting an unpaid leave of absence for the duration of the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year, following the birth of her child. According, in accordance with the contract that the district has with the teachers' union, this leave of absence needs to be approved by the Board of Education, so it can be approved on the consent agenda. And then finally, the last group of items is approval of policies being revised and/or deleted. This is the second reading of these policies. They present, they were presented in the board's first readings at our last meeting. I did not have any questions, comments, concerns, or requests for changes. So my recommendation is to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Perfect. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm with Scott.
Any second? Gabe Marks. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. And now on to new and unfinished business.
Great. So the first thing on our agenda for new and unfinished business is we're going to do a transition to a presentation. And so I'm going to ask Dr. Serusi, Dr. Fizdale, and Ms. Me to come up to the podium, and we're going to kind of tag-team this. And as Aaron is transitioning over from the PowerPoint slideshow, kind of speak to this a little bit. So last year, the district participated in and distributed climate surveys to students, staff, and families within the district. We received a lot of feedback from that survey, which has been very helpful for us in trying to make efforts to address any issues related to school climate. And it was requested by the board to have a follow-up presentation on the question that the district and administration has been making throughout the course of this school year. So, great, Aaron, you got the, can you make that whole screen just from down on the thing, Aaron? So people can see it. It on a computer in front of them. There we go. That's better. Thank you, sir. So Aaron, if you can go to the next slide, it'd be great. So we, I wanted to start off just by addressing the fact and highlighting the fact that the district and the Board of Education adopted a three-year strategic school plan, or a strategic plan, and identified four areas where we wanted to target making and seeing improvements. We want to see, obviously, see improvements in all areas, but obviously, through the strategic planning process, which was inclusive of students, staff, community members, elected officials, Board of Education members. The group ultimately landed on these four item, four areas of instruction, talent management, culture and climate, and organizational system. So the reason that we're highlighting this is because of the fact that the climate data gave us great information for things that we could really focus on. It was very helpful for us to have that information. But to be honest with you, we knew that we needed to address school climate even in advance of having that survey data. This has been something that I've, we've talked about in board meetings. We've discussed things in the board, and we'll get into it in the presentation, about things like having more competitive salary benefits, which this board has obviously been extremely supportive of. And, and the, the, the thing that's interesting about school climate is all four of these things relate to school climate. If you have more consistent instruction, if you have more specific things that you're working towards as a district with regards to improving instructional practices, you're going to increase and improve your, your, your climate for students and staff. Talent management, obviously, taking care of, of the people that work for us and take care of the students. That obviously pertains to culture and climate. Culture and climate pertains to culture and climate. And then organizational systems, if you put systems in place that help the district function at a higher level, well, that's going to improve culture and climate. So really, I, 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 we thought it was important to highlight the fact that our strategic plan in general is, is working towards improving the climate in the district for students, staff, and families. With that being said, obviously, we, we did get that survey data, and we're going to have well, I could start off. So if we go to the next slide, please? So once the climate survey data was provided to us, as, as the board knows, we utilized EastCon to facilitate the process. They distributed the, the links to us. We gave them to families. We gave them to students. We gave them to staff. And then the data was compiled by and disaggregated by EastCon staff, and shared then with the district. When we received the data from EastCon, we started off by reviewing and going over the data as an administrative team during the summer. We, it was extremely helpful for us to sit down during the relatively quiet months of the summer and really get into a, a, a good, wainy conversation about what are some areas that we need to address? What are some things that we think we need to look at, focusing on? We then took that conversation to our FACT team. Our FACT team is our coordinators and department leaders of the different contentarians, and really had a facilitated conversation that was very much under the same idea of, let's talk about what are some areas? And not surprisingly, there was a lot of similarities in the conversation. The, the coordinators and the administrators really identified very similar things that, that, that we felt it was important to focus on. And then I know that Penny and Michael are going to talk about it, but we didn't stop there. We took the data to the faculty of both the middle school and the high school. The principals facilitated conversations with their staff at each, at each respective building, and each at each respective building. And each respective building identified priorities based off of data that was specific to their school. So Penny and Michael are going to talk a little bit about those priorities and some work that has been done toward to address those issues.
Dr. Mera said, basically what we did was is we took a, we took an approach, very similar approaches. We took our faculty on a little bit of a data journey. We started off looking at the school climate data by schools. And so at the middle school, we used one of our PD days, a couple hours. We broke up into groups. We looked at different pieces of the data. What did they tell us? Based on that information, we consolidated it down to, I guess, a group of priorities that we all agreed on. And we came up with these four priorities. Initially, there were four questions. We actually have four statements. And the four statements sort of led us to continue this journey into developing, I guess, what you would call strategies that we currently use or we would like to use with our students to meet the identified priorities. The first one is building social skills with students in a media-driven world that they live in. We've all seen this. We've all heard this. You know, it's no joke. You can walk into a wall or you can walk into a student. You can almost walk into some adults on the street. They won't even look. They won't even look at you. They're looking at their phones. Or they're looking at their computers. How do we help them? Be a little bit more social, a little more interactive. Building student engagement and trust between peers was one that came out of the middle school survey, is how do we do that? Empowering students to stand up for each other, being upstanders versus bystanders when something happens. Include diversity equity in the classroom. What are we currently doing? What couldn't we be doing? I know Mary Rose will be talking a little bit more about that piece of it. But there's a lot that we do. And so when our faculty sat down and looked at these four priorities and made lists of the strategies that they're currently using, I would, we'd be here all night if I tried to show you some of those strategies. But we created sort of like a bank of them now. So staff can go look at them. If they want to pull one from here, one from there, group work came up in terms of socialization. There's different modes or different strategies that we're using currently at the middle school that teachers use in their classrooms every day to try to address these priorities. By sharing them, we create a bank, not just for our current teachers, but for new teachers coming on board. So you don't have to reinvent the wheel.
So at the high school, we did essentially what Dr. Cerusi explained in our approach to analyzing the data. Staff was broken up into three groups, looking at, or really six groups, but two groups looking at student data, two groups looking at staff data, and two groups looking at parent data. Out of all of that, I took everything that came up through that experience and also sort of cross-referenced it with the data analysis that we did as a staff in the summer with our leadership group. And just, you know, so there's, we had, we have 10 areas here as opposed to his four, because, you know, I was looking at sort of more big picture and trying to put it all together into, you know, one big overview. So basically, you'll see a lot of the things that we identified here as areas to improve upon. Some of them had, you know, overlapped, as Dr. McAmara had said previously, with the strategic plan that was created and adopted by the board. So it really just did, again, kind of capture the essence of what, you know, our community collectively was looking to address and improve in our district. So some of the things that rose to the top are experiences and perceptions of our diverse students as our demographics continue to grow. Student choice and the learning process, which has been captured a lot, that came up over and over again within the work for the instructional framework, which is part of the district plan as well, that Mary Rose will also talk about later. Obviously, staff morale, both, I think, you know, as Dr. McAmara referenced, you know, obviously wanting to show our teachers that they feel valued, not only obviously in the ways that we can in their day-to-day living here, but also by recognizing that, you know, the paycheck doesn't hurt either. So thank you for that part of, your part in that. Obviously, looking at ways to recognize staff, communication, you know, clarity around the school and district vision. So that came out like before the district vision came out. So obviously, we've done a lot of work there. Also looking at growing our information around and possibilities and opportunities for our students who are not necessarily college-bound. Actually, our manufacturing teacher is here with us in the audience tonight, who provides one of the greatest opportunities that we have, which is our youth manufacturing pipeline initiative, which has also helped us to grow other initiatives like our educational pipeline, which we're starting to implement next year. And then communication with parents, obviously, is always key. And then also opportunities for parents to get involved. So this was collectively coming from all the different work that we did diving into this data as a district. And I guess I'll keep going because we're, Dr. Cerusi and I will tag team back and forth because it's about the different things that we've done collectively and individually within the school year so far, or what we have been doing as well. But one of the things that I implemented this year was a monthly check-in with staff at faculty meetings. And so it's the same questions every month. We just did it today, where it's like, what's going well? What's not going so well? Are there ideas for improvements? Are there, you know, questions that you have or concerns that you're having or ideas in which we can always try to improve our quality of experience here for our staff and our students? So that's been kind of an opportunity for people to be able to just, you know, casually bring up some of the things that are on their minds. We also instituted admin office hours this year for the first time, where we had scheduled times during the day and after school, where we provided some light refreshments and had some great conversations and had just, you know, time for people to be able to come in and just talk with myself and Chris and Bethany, who are the assistant principals, and just to be able to have that one-on-one time. And then, of course, well, not of course, actually, the additional piece that we instituted this year was meeting with each department. So Chris, Bethany, and myself have been and will continue to take some of the department time after school to have a meeting with us to just talk about the things that are, you know, most important to them as a department and the questions and concerns or ideas that they have, good and bad and indifferent. And so that's been really, I think, a great opportunity for there to be continued voice for staff and their input. And then also, just as always, an open door policy of, you know, anytime, any day, have something in your mind, come and see us. And we always try to fit them right in and, you know, be able to address needs in the moment.
Very similar. Obviously, you can see it up there. The biggest, one of the biggest differences is we also have our coordinators who do provide us a lot of input. At the middle school, because most, a lot of the coordinators are high school, we also have team leaders. And we have five, actually, seven different, I would say seventeen leaders. One for each of the core teams. We have one for unified arts and one for our guidance. This way, we get to hear everybody's voice. It's bi-weekly. It's a sort of, they help create the agenda. We put it down, meet as a group, and we discuss current relevant issues for the middle school. So those are the bi-weekly team leader meetings. The monthly check-in at faculty meetings, we do very similar. We have open-ended questions at the end of the meeting. If there are rumor control or anything we need to address, we'll address it then. A lot of times- Trigger mouth. The open door policy is very similar. Our doors never close. Staff are always welcome to drop in, whether whichever staff want to come in and just chit chat or give me their two cents. I'll have staff come in just to occasionally tell me something great that happened or some priority or some need that they need or they feel the school needs that we've missed.
Next is we wanted to recognize and celebrate staff and their accomplishments. And so at monthly faculty meetings, also just trying to highlight to the faculty and having a moment to clap and celebrate and enjoy the moment with each other. So that's been a nice addition. Also, I know it doesn't sound like a big deal, but providing snacks at every faculty meeting, which some of it we purchase, some of it we bake with our own loving hands. And, you know, just trying to show, again, like an appreciation and sort of just showing that, you know, that we care about our staff. We also recently did a mobile coffee cart where Chris Mater, Bethany Pamrans, and myself walked around with a cart as of coffee, as it sounds, that the Wissens provided for us and walked around to every classroom. And it took about two hours, but it was great because not only did we get to go around and offer free coffee and tea, but also chit chat with each of the teachers and students that they might have had in their classroom. And just, I think it was a nice moment to have with them, but also for the students to see that we were recognizing and celebrating the staff here as well. So that was a lot of fun and we will definitely do that again. Obviously, providing snacks again. This was more targeted towards the after, after staff are here for like late-night conferences and recognizing the fact that that does extend their day and that, you know, it can be a little bit more added stress for preparing for them. So we thank them with putting treats in the department offices the following days. And then we have staff appreciation week coming up in the second week of May, I think. So we actually have a number of parents and staff who have donated gift cards or gifts, gift baskets. And we will have giveaways during that week, along with, there's a lot of other things going on. And Dr. McAmara is doing a Cinco de Mayo lunch. And then having the Kona Ice Truck again that we've had the last few years. Just again, our student union, our student council, I should say, also prepare all kinds of treats. And I think they're doing a coffee cart that week and doing some other things to recognize the staff as well. So that will be a great week. Everybody will be well-fed and appreciated, hopefully. And then we also have what we call our Sunshine Lunches, which is a group of staff members who volunteer their time to put together really fun lunches, like during early release days where we have professional development and we have an opportunity to all sit in the cafeteria together. And we'll bring, like we did baked potatoes the last time, we baked all the potatoes and we, everybody brought all the different fixings and we all ate. And, you know, really got slow and full for the afternoon. It set us up for not such a productive PD afternoon. No, I'm just kidding. It was actually great. And we shared it with our presenters who came from out of district as well, which is really nice. And we do things like walking tacos and desserts and all that kind of stuff. So it's something that happens, you know, pretty subtly throughout the school year.
So we do, I've got the next one.
Oh, he's got middle.
I got middle school.
We didn't finish middle school.
Oh, my apologies.
Sorry. I'll still hurt. I'll still-
You're good.
At each of our faculty meetings, we give out what's called a Bravo Award. We used to have a Bravo parking spot. That's now disappeared only because it wasn't actually, it was in a better spot than it is now. But the awardee gets, is recognized. So a staff member will nominate somebody to replace them every month. And they come up and they give an award and they give a little speech about why they want this person to win it. I can tell you that this month was Kim Kane, last month was Beth Walsh. And both are actually REA reps for middle school and high school. And it was kind of interesting. They passed, one passed the torch along to the other. The advice, any advice, I don't know if Kim Kane is online, but the advice is if Kim Kane tells you to do it, follow her direction. Sage advice. So the Bravo Award is one of them. The other is we always do good news. We love to celebrate when a student gets to go to college or our students go off on their own and get jobs. The faculty will share with us or share it during our meeting, beginning of each meeting. It's a nice way to start it off. We also do snacks. We do them for conferences. We've ordered pizzas or things. We'll come up with interesting ways of, one year, I think we did a deli style. I went out and got deli meat myself. And we had sort of sandwiches and stuff just for a little snack before parent-teacher conferences or our open house. We do have food days at the middle school. Hospitality likes to run food days once a month. Usually, February is dedicated to Chocolate Day. Spring was, I think, we did, we didn't do corned beef this year, but we've done in the past different things like in the holidays, Thanksgiving, we roast a couple turkeys and we share it with faculty and staff during the school day. Staff Appreciation Week is coming up on the week of May 5. We do, we ourselves do a sort of a, not a potluck dinner, but parents will come in, bring us, bring in food, supply some food for luncheon, sort of a mini luncheon, along with giveaways, gifts, things, area just to celebrate the whole staff. All of our staff are invited. And it's a fun thing to do. The last thing is, it's not actually up there, but I need to mention that AHM and Flower Grill in town are providing us with a couple of healthy breakfasts, both, I believe, in March and coming up in May. Middle School's May 14, I'm going to guess, somewhere around there. But it's nice to have the community come in and recognize what you do. And also, to be honest, a lot of times, food goes a long way for people. There are lots of stories about food and you could tell good stories right around a good meal. But moving along.
So you're sensing a theme and you're also recognizing, you're also recognizing why I think I put on 15 pounds in the past two and a half years since I started working here at RAM. You know, at the district level, you know, to recognize and celebrate staff. And the other thing too, it's not just recognizing and celebrating staff, but it's, it's an opportunity to come together. That's a big part of a lot of what, you know, Michael and Penny and I'm talking about. It's an opportunity to come together as a community because when you work in a school community, you're in your own little fiefdom, right? You're in your classroom. You're doing your thing. You know, if you have a free period, you're grading papers, you're lesson planning and where you're running, you have literally two minutes to run down the hallway or go back and go to the bathroom. So opportunities to come together, a group are really important. And that's one of the things that obviously, you know, what we're describing and talking about. So they've noted this before. We do a staff holiday luncheon as a district. We do have staff appreciation week coming up. A little, letting the cat out of the bag, this year, staff appreciation week falls on, we're doing it during the week of May 5. So with May 5 being Cinco de Mayo, it's going to be a little Cinco de Mayo-themed Mexican meal for our staff. One of the things that we're doing also this year is we are implementing the Connecticut Teacher of the Year program here in the district. This is something that I had talked about doing in my first year coming into the district, but was, you know, it just was told that it wasn't something that the district did. But we have 140 staff members and we have some, not some, we have a lot of phenomenal teachers in this district. And to me, I just think we're missing an opportunity to recognize some of the great things that are being done in this school community. It's a, it's a program where teachers can be nominated by other staff members within the district. And basically, there's a process that you go through to identify and select a winner. It is a committee process. It is not driven by administrators. It will be a committee that is comprised primarily of teachers. I've asked Mary Rose to facilitate this process. And we're super excited to bring it out this year. I just communicated with our staff right before vacation to let them know this is something we're doing and to start thinking about who's a person they'd want to nominate. Winners at the district level, those identified as the teacher of the year for a school district have the opportunity to, they'll be recognized at a statewide event, which happens in the fall. And if they choose to do so as a district-wide winner, they have an opportunity to kind of throw their hat in the ring to be considered the state teacher of the year. And if you ever win the state teacher of the year, you have the opportunity to move forward in advance and be considered as the national teacher of the year. I think it was probably about 10 years ago where a Connecticut teacher of the year won the national teacher of the year. It's Johanna Hayes. She's now a Congresswoman. She was a teacher in Waterbury Public School, I believe, is where Johanna taught. And so, you know, I'm excited about bringing this program into the district. And then I talked about this before, but I don't think it can be said enough, which is the positive movement that we've made with regards to salary and benefits. I, you know, this board was supportive and recognized that we needed to make adjustments and not just the adjustments for salaries for bargaining units, you know, of the typical percentage increase that is given out because we would still be below the market if that's what the increases were. And we heard about this from teachers. This board has heard about that being an issue in board meetings. This board has heard about that it being a an issue uh in board meetings on numerous occasions by by members of uh public, by members of the public who come to comment on that. And so I I'm really excited that that, you know, with all of our bargaining that we did this year and and last year with our bargaining in the groups, uh we made positive progress with with all of those. So um, we wanted to make sure that we we did highlight that. Uh, we go to the next slide, please.
So providing a platform for student input, one of the things we do at the middle school is our student council sort of gives us a lot of input. Um, they're the ones that bring concerns to administration. Actually, they're responsible for some of the shelves that we have in bathrooms because kids were saying, we can't leave our agenda books anywhere. If we take them out, we get signed out, where do we put them? They don't want to put them on the sink, they wet. So they came up with an idea, could we put something like a shelf in there? That was instituted about three or four years ago. Um, but that was a direct result of having that discussion with students. We use them anytime we need a focus group. They love to volunteer to do like the taste testing for the cafeteria. It's always a big one. Um, but whenever we need a focus group, we go to our student council and we ask them, we ask them the questions. The other thing that we do is our school counseling staff do periodic check-ins with our students through our advisories. They'll fill out a quick survey to see how they're doing. Um, and sort of a brief check-in just to see what take the pulse of the student body.
And we have similar a similar approach at the high school, though we do have student council who also will um periodically meet with me and administration to talk about their ideas. They've done all this, our student council really um on behalf of Teresa Kelly and Laura Schnittman, who are two uh social studies teachers who lead that group, have done a tremendous job in really um building uh the school spirit, uh having uh the Raptor Cup uh competition throughout the year and having an ice cream social at the end of the year for the the grade level that um wins that. And it it does, they do a lot of like food drives, uh clothing drives, um spirit weeks, and you name it, goes on and on. So that that is something that has been very robust um for the past several years. Um, and also we do have a principal's advisory, which we we've had for since I've been here in the district, 2013. It's uh probably started way before that, where um monthly there's a lunch period and it does rotate so that all students and students don't have to be in their lunch period, they can leave the classroom um and just uh come meet with us and they're, you know, being accounted for, uh where they get to just come and talk about any of their questions, concerns, ideas. Um, you know, there are a lot of things have come out of those meetings. It's really great to see like each month, who are the students that are going to show up and what are the things that are going to be on their mind? Um, you know, it's interesting sometimes to hear what what's important to them. Um, there was one time this year where where students were saying, we want more um opportunities to sort of explore what we can do outside of college, which was showed up on the student survey last year. So there was an echo of that um and other different ideas and things that we can be doing um as a school, just to kind of, you know, continue to broaden their experiences here and to open them up to all the possibilities that they have in front of them after they leave high school. And one of the the really consistent um messages that we have been getting for the last several years is this idea of Ram respect. And I don't know if you've noticed at all, when there are sweatshirts and T-shirts and things around the school that refer to Ram respect. And then we had a respect day a few years ago and just sort of celebrated the idea of respecting each other and each other's um differences and similarities. Um, and one of our students, a senior student this year, wanted to paint a respect mural in the school, which uh she started sometime before break, and I went by it today and it's not completed. I was gonna try to take a picture and share that with you tonight, um but I didn't want to do that prematurely um before her unveiling. So when that is completed, uh which is looking great so far, um I will take a picture of that and share that with Dr. McNamara so he can share that out with all of you too. So it just, it really shows the student-driven efforts to wanting to create a community of respect.
Before you move on, how does the student council select them at each level?
They are voted in by their peers every year for grade levels, presidents, vice president, secretary, treasurer.
For for us, it's uh they're selected by the teachers on team. They come up with a list of names and then they go through them and then they talk to the kids.
I I I'll just jump in for a second. Um, you know, and there's routine and regular things that each school does to make sure that student's voice is a part of the conversation. But really, we look at every opportunity that we can to make sure that student voice. So so you have your your unique situations, your one-ofs. We'll be talking as a as a leadership team and we'll say, well, let's talk to the kids about it. You know, Mary Rose uh two months ago discussed the development of the instructional framework. And I think one of the most powerful parts of that process was actually having Samantha and some of her her classmates and and students from high school, Brianna and um and Oliver being a part of that, you know, come and weigh in on that. That was, it was a really great experience. When we did our um, when we did the uh strategic plan process, we had students as a part of that process. Um, and even prior to having them be part of the 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 strategic planning committee, we wanted to make sure that students were also, we had focus groups with students. So we had student focus groups to provide input to the committee about things that they felt were important to be a part of the strategic plan. I I say this just because what Penny and Michael are doing are is great. It's 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 ongoing, it's 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 regular, it's routine, so they're constantly hearing input from students. But involving students and hearing their voice in in really as much as in in every aspect of the the, you know, the management of the building and ideas that come to to come to mind, um it's a really important part of what we try to do.
Well, and also we should highlight our board representatives as well.
Yeah.
And the addition of the middle school representative.
Absolutely.
He was doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Um, you know, it's just, I think there are so many ways that we try to incorporate student voice because that's what we do as board here for all day, every day. It's hard for us to sit down and be like, what are the things that we do to listen to students? Because we feel like we're just, the door is always open, like, you know, the open door policy is for students as well. Um, I have students who come and make appointments with me, I have students who reach out through email regularly. And, you know, I feel like there's this nice ebb and flow of, you know, students who just walk into the office and say, I have a question, or, you know, I'd like to talk about X, Y, and Z. So even though we have the more structured formal ways to get their voice, it just occurs every day. It's just part of, it's why we're here, so it's why we're here.
Um, recognizing and celebrating students, we do a lot. This is just a, well, a shorter list, a short list. Um, teams, each team has Students of the Month that they'll designate a couple of students each month. Uh, we have daily announcement of students or student achievements, student accomplishments. I know Dr. McNamara talked about the future problem solvers. That made that made its way into our daily announcements. Sports makes its way into the announcements on occasion. We have coming coming up uh the Cave Award, Board of Ed Award, which will be given out in May. I won't surprise who they, won't tell you who they are. The Scholar Leader Award, unfortunately, is the same night, so we're splitting duty administratively, going to two different places. Um, myself and Miss Bell, but I won't spoil that award either. I'll tell you on May 19th who who those two students are. No hints to the present company. And then we also have the Art and Music Coffee House, which was fantastic over the last week, or I should say, two weeks ago. Um, we have a great bunch of artists and great musicians at at the school. The Team Awards are given out every year. Those who've had students come through here, you know that, you know, the kids are nominated for it, they see it. Yes, not everybody gets them, but we all, we tell them all the time, it's a way to earn something. And in high school, it it means a little bit more at the high school level. We try to share this with them. Sometimes you get a little bit of money at the high school level. Doesn't hurt. I mean, I had my old kids go through another school, another district, they got a little scholarship here and there, paid for some books, books I didn't have to pay for. But, you know, those are nice things that happen. That's the path, the trajectory you're on, or you could be on. It's your choice. But those Team Awards are given out uh usually the first week.
So one of the new ways that we've been celebrating student success this year is through our Raptor Spotlight. You might have been seeing it in the Rambler every week. We also have them um that same spotlight on the our screens in the office and in the um atrium and other places in the building, just so that students can see the good things that their peers are doing. And it's not always school-related, which is a nice thing because I've learned some things about students and things that they're doing outside of school and it's like blows me away sometimes. I'm like, how is it that you're doing this at this age? Um, but it, you know, however we find out, we have a a form that teachers and staff and everybody else can fill out, but then it's sometimes just finding out from a parent and saying, hey, this is something my child's doing outside of school, but obviously it's something that we should highlight, um to sort of just be able to share the collective experience. So that's been a really great new addition. Obviously, we have our daily announcements as well. Um, every year we have our Honors Breakfast, which we have two um, two times in May, usually in May, end of May, um where we honor students who have met honor roll um for um several quarters or all quarters that school year. And then as seniors, if they um got honor roll for all 15 quarters, which we do have a couple every year, we do have a couple this year so far, which is also really exciting. Um, and then families come and participate in that ceremony and then also um join us for a little breakfast. Um, we have an awards night where not only do we present some of the book awards and things that where students can get money from from different colleges, um but also recognition from our different department leaders, um identifying not only students who are excelling, but students who have shown growth or have shown a skill in a particular area. Um, obviously, senior scholarships is a big one. That's where the big money is and I get to announce those on the um during graduation uh rehearsals. And I feel like, I don't know, like, there were some people like give away money. I just like call out names and tell them about the thousands of dollars that they're getting. And it's pretty, it's really fun. It's exciting. I'm like, oh, man, I would love to, um, you know, been able to have that available to me when I was a a high school student. Um, but it's it's not just, it's not just coming, it's not coming from us, but it is coming from the community and various organizations, including H M and, you know, all the all the people and and places that that support our students. We also have the evening of the arts, which I, which I know um many of you have been hearing about and may have been at, where we recognize the students not only just in the high school, but also the middle school and elementary schools. And um staff can put in uh award, I mean, uh, put in artwork and all that. So it's a really, it's a great community experience. And then we have several honor societies, which, you know, I think um, obviously we have our National Honor Society where we have a lot of our students who do qualify for that through their GPA and going through the application process and all that. But there are several others, departmental level, you know, business, music, um, I'm trying to think uh other random ones, but it's like literally the Technical Honor Society is a new one.
44 students in the.
Yep. Um, so we tried to, and and schools don't have to do that. It really comes down to the departments and the members of that department who want to invest the time and energy into recognizing their students and and and, you know, providing the um the criteria from whatever organization that they're working with and to be able to have a special evening in which they get to celebrate each one of those inductions, um world language. I mean, we can go on, there's so many. And then, of course, the Cass Student Awards, which is also, um, you know, we have the um Scholar Athlete, which we get to go to the aquature for. We also have um, as Dr. McNamara mentioned previously, with our arts and music or uh visual and performing arts as well. And then we also have the Cave Award, which is presented by the Board of Education, obviously, um, and you'll be doing next month with um several of our students. Oh, here's the example of a Raptor Spotlight. So you might have seen this already, but three of our students are part of um the World Affairs Council of Connecticut and they served as student officers and um they were selected based on their model UN expertise and um their leadership qualities and that, you know, they're responsible for leading debates on different topics. Um, and, you know, they really get to kind of have this real-world experience um as leaders, as student leaders. And so we have Trevor Hooker and Eliza Rami and Cam Jax, who are in that picture and that photo proudly smiling. And so this is just an example of what we do showcase in our, on our screens and in the Rambler. And we have several other, like, actual physical boards and presentations, not technical, which uh this one's from middle school.
Yep. So sort of like Women's History Month, we will celebrate different months as part of our social emotional learning process on committees. Um, we've come up with monthly themes. So this just has to be celebrating the Women's History Month and I believe that the green team is looking at the Black History Month, which is past January.
Um, as a district, um, our leadership, our faculty, we continue to work to build our capacity to help, I'm sorry.
We continue to work to build our capacity to help um faculty and administration know how to best support the students and to support the growing diversity of our community. Um, we have um a book study group. We have professional development offerings that are presented district-wide. And faculty and leadership also go and visit different schools, either through a NEASC process or the different councils that are held at the State of Connecticut or among the rests. And all of this work is that capacity building for us that we're invested in to ensure that district faculty and that leadership are are doing their work to help support the diversity of our students as well.
So one of one of the things we've started doing in both schools is we started celebrating uh and recognizing not just student diversity, but also the different themes that go along with each month. And you can almost go wild with this. You really can. I mean, you can go all in all sorts of places. So at the middle school, we adopted sort of a two-year calendar. We sort of separated things out. Um, just to give you some ideas, there are up there like Hispanic Heritage Month is in September. Beginning December was the month of giving for us. The month of giving was all about basically giving back to the community, collecting toys for maybe Dec of the high schools, collecting toys, did a toy drive, or collecting food for the food banks. Um, you can go into February Black History Month and March was Ramadan, and I'll give you a little story about that a little bit later with a picture. But we go through each month and each had themes and they're recognized nationally as different themes or whatever. I mean, I don't know how they came up with the months. Maybe it was around the holiday or something like that because May is Asian American, Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander heritage month. Most of us don't think about these things on a day-to-day basis, but it does have a huge impact on our students.
So this is just an example of one of the bulletin boards that our SEL committee put together for Native American Heritage Month. Um, this is showcased in the main hallway of our high school so that it gets as much exposure and and it just really gives the opportunity for us to to show that we um, you know, are are trying to celebrate and recognize and uh be able to give voice to various diverse groups. Uh, this was uh the current one actually for April, um American Heritage Month and Autism Acceptance Month.
So this was a middle school. One of the things we celebrated this year was Ramadan. And each, you could see it, green team and then gold team, they each had, each team sort of adopted their own little theme, but they put different things up about the holiday. Um, we actually got a a wonderful comment from a parent who said that their child actually felt seen and heard because before this, no one had ever celebrated their holiday or made any any to-do about anything about it. It was just your regular holidays going through the year. The fact that we did this as a whole school was extremely impressive and the parents themselves recognized it. Their child felt not only heard and seen, but was asked about the holiday themselves. Whereas previous years in other districts where where they came from, no, no one ever noticed or knew about it. And the fact that we even talked about not being able to eat, or you had to eat meals before sunrise and you couldn't eat eat or drink until after sundown. And so what did that mean? What did it mean for some of our students? And I know at the high school, what does it mean for our student athletes? You do have to take this into account.
I understand at the high school that one of the teams, they all got together and ate breakfast with one of their teammates prior to sunrise. And so whereas the young woman who was celebrating Ramadan, she felt seen um by seeing her holiday recognized in her school, but it's also given our other students an opportunity to learn about the world around them. They're going to leave this community and go somewhere where their colleagues and their coworkers are fasting and they're going to understand what that means. And it gave them a chance to share in the holiday with them and to show empathy and compassion and kindness to their teammate. I think that was, that was a wonderful place.
So staying within the student experience, um, one of the areas identified was improving peer-to-peer relationships. Um, there's, obviously, this is an ongoing effort that is done in every day in every classroom all the time, um, in all the little ways that we can't even probably put into words. But um, some of the ways in which we have really tried to sort of set the stage for that is one of the changes that we is one of the changes that we made earlier this school year, or right before this school year started, where at the high school, we have students who, you know, they have to put their phone in, usually it's a shoe rack, but it could be some other kind of receptacle, where they're just dropping their phone off as they walk through the door. That way, they're sitting in the classroom, ready to listen most of the time. It's just really, most of the time they're listening, even though they don't have their phones in front of them. Now, it really has, honestly, I joke about that, but the feedback that we have consistently received from students, from staff and from parents is that our students are much more focused in the classroom and they're much more engaged and ready for the learning. And actually, I remember a student telling me at the beginning of the school year that they were relieved to not have their phone in their hands or in their bag or on their desk, because they didn't have to worry about what was happening on social media or who was texting them, because everyone's phone is put away, right? And that they can actually get a break from that. So I think in a lot of ways, even though we anticipated some student pushback, they embraced it and were excited about it. And I think we're just waiting for us to do that and say, put the phones away, right? So it didn't, it's not the fixer of all things, but I certainly think it has projected us into a space in which students are not only more engaged in the learning process, but more engaged with each other and speaking with each other. You know, it's fascinating when you see, unfortunately, sometimes in the cafeteria, where they're all sitting around the table and they're all on their phones, yet they're all sitting next to each other. But in the classroom, you see a lot more back and forth, in-person talking and collaborating. And that's been a lot, that's been a focus for a lot of teachers in their goals this year, which has capitalized on the no-phone policy. So the middle school, I don't want to steal your thunder, but they have, they have, you know, they have a no-phone policy that's been in existence for very many, well, I guess forever. They have to have it in their lockers, so.
The phone's supposed to be in their lockers. I say supposed to be.
And then we also had this year Scott Driscoll, who came in, not only for our district, but also for some of the sending schools' sixth graders as well that Dr. McNamara put together. And also, there was an opportunity at night for parents and community members to come in and learn about the, you know, the ills of social media and the ways in which, unfortunately, students can be, you know, they can, there's, there are a lot of things for them to steer away from, to be smart about, to know about, to understand, and to know that everything they're doing online is permanent and that, you know, they need to think about their future selves as well as their current selves before posting something online.
Public and permanent, you choose your word.
Public and permanent.
Public and permanent. I think you use it once before when you came the first time around. Oh, so, I mean, there was a couple others on there. Drumming United and Unified Basketball. When you talk about peer-to-peer relationships, it's wonderful to go to Drumming United and watch them play for about like these kids. And then supporting CAFES and how they celebrate each other. I would say the same thing for Unified Basketball. You, you go and watch a game and you're, and it sort of warms your heart, especially on a cold winter day. If you want something nice and warm, just walk into the gym and watch these kids play. It's a lot of fun. Raptor Recreation Day.
Yeah, so the middle school has always done something at the beginning of the year where they have team building outside. But when the governor, a few years back, said, we need to have a get-out-side-and-play day, it really put into action something that students had been voicing they wanted at the high school was something similar to the middle school, getting, getting outside, having fun, being in the fresh air, interacting with each other in a playful and fun and positive and kind way. And so we really capitalized on that last year. And we had our first Raptor Recreation Day. It's May 23rd this year. It's on our half-day, so it really provides a really great time for students to be able to, to get outside and literally play. And it's a technology-free day, because literally, nobody has their phones in front of them because they're outside having fun, which kind of brings me back to my, my days of being a youth in which, you know, without, without technology, we spent so much time outside, right? And our students now, unfortunately, don't get that experience per se. I mean, some of them do, some of them don't. But one of the things that I love about Raptor Recreation Day is also our partnership with HM. And, well, not only does Ressa do her own zumba during that day, which is, was the most popular student activity that we had last year amazingly. Like, I never would have ever, ever believed, but they loved it. And that, you know, they provided a drummer for us last year. They provided all kinds of additional resources and, and actual just like big yard games and all kinds of stuff like that. So I thank HM for their willingness to participate their own time and also their resources for that. So if you want to see what that looks like, come on May 23rd. It's fabulous. You'll see every student smiling. It's a great day.
And they'll be smiling down at the middle school. They do something very similar. So yes, we have Team Building Day beginning of the year. It's great for our seventh graders coming in. They get to meet each other and learn a little bit more about each other along, learning more about the teachers. At the end of the year, the Get-Out-and-Play Day was the governor's enactment. And so we, we tried to figure out how we would do this. And so our two student, our student council decided to take it over. They actually planned it, organized it, and they run it. They've asked different faculty members. We have everything for activities from like an escape room to tai chi. And so it's, it's a fun day. It's like the high school. We have organized different events, and the kids enjoy it. The feedback we've gotten is, could we do this like once a month? Or the answers go. They would love recess, but that won't fit in the schedule either at the moment. But that, it's a ni, it's just a nice way to connect, especially at the end of the year. It's a nice way also to get out and run around. Really good, you know, I say.
And it's actually pretty amazing to see high schoolers getting back into play mood, you know? Not only are they playing like kickball and, you know, different yard cornhole and yard games, but basketball, tennis and cornhole. I mean, all the, I mean, that can, what is it, can jam? Like, there's so many games out there that we don't even know exist. And we've got water activities this year, spoiler alert. Well, our high school is on here, so that's good. But we, we got a lot of feedback from our students and staff, students and staff last year. And we've incorporated. And snacks, because snacks are important. So that's new this year too, snacks.
Just some things about, I won't go over the whole list extensively. I know we're running on a little bit. But for middle school, when you talk about parent communication, it's always a topic that comes up on almost every survey. What can you do more? Sometimes you can tweak things or change things. We went to a weekly Raptor Report. I started it out a few years ago as sort of a blast from the principal, once a month. Then it became once every other week. Now it's become weekly, and it got a name. When we became the Ram Raptors, it became the Raptor Report. Email blasts are sent out on a regular basis to parents about important things separate from the newsletter. Conferences at the beginning of the year, and then the student-led conferences in the spring. People have asked why. We did a survey about the student-led conferences, and parents do, do like them. The survey came back with positive results from staff and parents. Basically, if you ever, if you've had a child and you sit at home and you ask them, how was school today? And you're all laughing because they say, fine. Sam over here, that's fine, yeah. So it was a way to get students to engage a little bit more, because now they had to explain how they're doing in school. So if you don't come here to do your student-led conference, if they want, you don't have to. It gets sent home. And so you can open it up on the Chromebook, and you can go, can you tell me? Can you tell me about this? And it's a nice conversation starter. It's also a good lead-in to the high school portfolio process, because they'll, they'll have that, whether they're seventh, eighth grade, coming up in ninth grade, they'll start that process. We do do this in the coming seventh-grade orientation. We had that a while, two weeks ago. We had forty, about fifty parents there. They were a little, little timid at first, because they were all, most of them, I would say, ninety-five percent were new parents in middle school. And it's just one of those intimidating things. It's, you know, it's very different up here. So we went through that orientation. And the teams themselves will send out emails about important events or things that are going on in each team. We try constant communication in this process. I filled any call, any parent that called me. I've had parents call me, anything from, you know, bus routes to the cost of a meal in the cafeteria. You know, how does that get deterred? And if it's above me, I try to, I can figure out who can answer that question for me. But we always get back to them.
And obviously, we have all the same ways that we communicate regularly with parents. But we also have the collaboration with eighth-grade night, or we have every year, you know, there's something for like junior planning and all the different big events and moments that happen, which, you know, we can't capture on a slide. But one of the new things this year that I think has been a, a work in progress and something that is rarely overdue was having some consistent practices around grading and, and updating grades and communicating with parents. So, you know, teachers, and not that this wasn't happening, but it, it wasn't necessarily consistently happening. And it, and it just, it just gives us sort of this structure and framework that everybody can work from, and that parents, students and teachers can all be on the same page and understand and know what to expect in terms of when will their grades be updated. So grade books should be bi-weekly updated, not just meaning that they've added grades, but that their grade is current at that moment so that a student knows if they're passing or failing or in jeopardy of starting to slip or whatever the case might be. And also having a, a consistent timeframe in which grade papers or projects and tests and/or any other kind of formative or summative assessments are graded within, either formative within a week or summative within a couple of weeks. Obviously, there can be extenuating circumstances depending on particulars, but that, that's the overall expectation. And also that as a teacher will communicate with a parent and a counselor, and obviously, the student, when a grade drops a letter grade, so that there's no surprises at the end of the quarter or end of the semester, or the end of the school year. Everybody's forewarned. Everybody knows what needs to be done for the student to have an opportunity to improve. And then, you know, have that time to do so so that we know our students have every opportunity to show what they understand and what they can do.
So Penny and Michael have been speaking about what they're doing in their schools. I'm going to speak briefly about what we're doing as a district. One thing that happened this year, this board voted to pass our new evaluation and support plan for teachers and to formalize it and send it to the state, which we did last year. We surveyed, every year, we sent out a survey to faculty in the spring, and we look for input around what they would like to see happen in professional development opportunities and things that they'd like our district to consider. And this should be included, a question about how faculty felt about this new system that is in place. Some of it was dictated by the state, and we made, we put our own pre-handprint on it. And we, our, our survey's only been out for two days, two school days. So, but we had about eighty-five respondents, and seventy percent reported that they felt that this new teacher evaluation system was excellent or very good. People felt very supported. It's really a coaching, a coaching people towards a goal. And so that's been a real win for us. I think in terms of faculty feeling like they're being valued because they're being supported, they're being coached towards growth. Oh, next. Oh, that's it, you got it. So this slide shows a few examples of the kind of professional development that we've supported this year. We have had district faculty engage in over a hundred and forty different off-site workshops or short courses or council meetings. Some of the professional learning has been department-focused. Some of it has been geared towards the faculty's individual goals that they identified, the things that they wanted to grow towards under the new teacher evaluation and support system. Some of the teachers have taken their own time outside of their contractual day. For example, some of the Harvard short courses, they may have a few hours on an early closing PD and a little bit of time at a department meeting time. But by and large, they may be using a lot of their own off-contract time because they want to grow and they want to learn. And when we talk about this practice in the context of school climate, the simple truth is that professional learning matters. It improves the teacher's skills. It strengthens their problem-solving. It encourages new innovative practices, revitalizes their teaching, their growth mindset. And just as important, I believe, and I appreciate Colin's support for the kinds of PD that we have had our teachers engage in. It shows the teachers that we're really invested in them and in their growth. Research also shows that supporting faculty professional development can help with teacher retention as well. The individual workshops, conferences that people have gone to, in addition to that, our district has provided professional development. If you recall the, the climate survey, there was some feedback on experiences and perceptions of diverse students. And so we really worked to try, and the faculty identified this as wanting to become more culturally responsive educators. So we have really put a lot of time and effort into providing professional learning for people to have growth in that area. As I mentioned, our PDEX survey, we get input from teachers. We also have a very vibrant professional development and evaluation committee. So I would say over the last five years, there's been a tremendous amount of teacher voice in what teachers want to engage with in professional development. And so we have about fourteen faculty teachers on the Professional Development and Evaluation Committee. They offer input suggestions. They bring requests from the faculty to our monthly meetings. And they ultimately shape much of what we have for learning opportunities in the district. Our thinking is, the voice of the faculty is the voice of what they see identified as student need. And then we can be responsive to that as much as possible. We support staff through coaching. In the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the district committed to providing literacy coaching, math coaching at the middle school, and some instructional coaching. And this practice is a little more invigorated, expanding the scope of literacy coaching. As Director of Curriculum and Instruction, I've been able to go in and do some demonstrations of different pedagogical practices with teachers while also supporting some of their own growth and trying some new things. Again, it speaks to that, supporting faculty, helping them feel a sense of efficacy. And we know from research that collective efficacy amongst your faculty, not only is it fantastic for the climate and the culture of a building, it also leads to student learning, which is ultimately why we're here. We also support staff through common planning time and collaboration. It looks different in each building. Both the middle school and the high school use scheduling to ensure that faculty have time to collaborate. This is especially important with the Teacher Evaluation and Support Plan, because many of the faculty have collaborative goals. So they can actually meet together with colleagues, and they can work together to build their capacity to be stronger in either an area of content or an area of pedagogy. The research about the value on the importance of collaboration really supports this practice. It's been a really important part of our positive school climate within both schools. A study that was conducted by Lyndon Darling-Hammond, I don't know if that name means anything. She's one of those gurus of educational research, revealed that teachers who engage in regular collaborative activities report higher levels of job satisfaction. They also tend to stay in their jobs longer. And teachers who feel supported, appreciated and connected to their colleagues are more likely to remain committed to the profession. And finally, we have extended our collaboration, and this brings this back full circle. With our sending districts, I didn't think we were going to get here this year, but we've gotten here. We've extended our collaboration with the districts, and it's really allowed us to build stronger networks and more transactional relationships between the sending districts that are coming into our school. So we're talking about blending of professional learning opportunities, evolving relationships between the sixth and seventh grade teachers as well, so that we can learn how to best welcome the students from the sending districts into RAM, really looking to create a seamless transition. I'm particularly excited about this work this year as it really marks a shift in the cooperation between the sending districts. So we had a wonderful math collaborative meeting in February, I believe, before vacation, and over six-grade teachers came and spent a day here. On Thursday, a team from Hebron is coming. The following Thursday, another team from Hebron is coming. And then I'm hoping that Marlboro also, I can't remember if they wanted to do this year or wait till the fall. But building these relationships again lets us connect to each other, both within and beyond our building. And, and knowing very much that positive climate is really going to translate into stronger learning experiences for our students.
And we've got, does somebody have the timer? Because we might want to work on a lot of things.
Yeah, well, so as you, you know, I appreciate all the work that.
Where's the food?
We walked into that. We walked into that. Again, remember, I gained 15 or 20 pounds. So, so as, you know, as you can see, this has been a significant focus of the work that we have been, you know, the collective administrative team has been focused on. You know, we've, one thing I didn't even mention, but I, I feel it's important to do it is one of the outcomes of our negotiations with our teachers bargaining unit was a restructuring of our stipends, the, the call advisors, coaches. And, and not only was a market adjustment made to those positions, but the board gave some latitude for restructuring those. And we actually, I collect, that's been a process I've been collaborating with one of the RIA members that led the negotiations process. And one of the things that we did said was let's create a climate, like a stipend that focuses on like, for both students and staff that focus on like climate activities, like what are some other things that we could do as well? So like, again, this is a huge focus for us, as you can see from the 45 minute presentation, but we can do our best to answer any questions that we might have.
I don't want to make this go any longer. Just like, just two quick, you had mentioned your PDEX. So did you always, this is kind of a few, did you always meet monthly?
Every month.
Was always this didn't have to do with your change of the T-valve?
Every month we, we met. We, I think we added a few members now. We have, the RIA members are elected and, but we are also like, if you want to come, please come. But they also know that they can bring that voice to that representative. But yes, we meet every single month. There were a few years, I would say in the late 20 teens where the PDEX wasn't quite as vibrant. We didn't have, I was a teacher then, there was a limited teacher voice. And then around 2020, 2021, teacher voice came back in more vigorously and we really honored that as, as much as possible because honestly, teachers are in the classroom. They know where the needs are and we really want to make sure that we're meeting those needs.
I just wondered if it had changed just because of a new T-valve?
No, this has been, yeah. In fact, I think, you know, one of the things that I, I think we can pride ourselves in is that we have had a robust PDEX committee for many years. And although there has been a renewed requirement for that in terms of obviously the new evaluation system, but we had that in place already. In fact, even before the new evaluation system, we brought in a paraprofessional representative as well. And, and every year opening up to teachers who want to be on that committee and cover their classes to meet with us during that first period at every month. So, yeah, it's been, it's grown tremendously, but it's existed and, and for a very long time.
Any other questions? So, obviously there's a lot of work here and yeah, I'm very glad you embraced the axiom that our army travels on its stomach. But this, this is, a lot of this is ongoing, right? You just mentioned some stuff from 2021. So when I looked at the climate survey results, page after page of comments and stuff, I was very pleased to see a lot of positive and a lot of good things. But as Colin says, we always try to get better. And so what I'd like you to think about, or if you can even say anything tonight, is was there anything in the 23-24 survey that stood out to you as surprising, given all the work you do here? And that you, as a consequence of that survey, want to do differently?
I mean, I think I'll speak for myself in that it just gave us a renewed focus. I'm excited. Do you think that sometimes, you know, we, I mean, we have the climate surveys every two years. That's something that's existed and is required for a long time. And I don't, you know, I think you're always just getting a quick snapshot in a brief moment of time. And I, I think we can recognize in the last several years of teaching, you know, due to all sorts of variables, including an awful pandemic that I can't really remember. So, but, you know, I think that it's just, you know, gave us that renewed energy, that renewed perspective of reminding ourselves how important it is to be able to interact with one another, communicate, share accolades and be able to, be able to that show value and appreciation for not only our students and our staff, but just the community as a whole and just providing opportunities that maybe needed to be, you know, rethought. I mean, I think this is an evolution that will continue to evolve over time and will continue. Like a lot of the stuff that we presented tonight isn't just all new stuff. Like there's a lot of it that we've been doing, but then of course some renewed ideas and approaches.
I, I wasn't surprised. I, I guess I wasn't so. I was, what really, I guess caught me was some of the comments the students had that felt that they weren't seen, that they felt not like part of the community. And that's been, that's been a lot of the new work that we started doing. That it's really hard, even if it's just two or three kids to hear that they don't feel, because you know, they're speaking for many others. And I think that, I think we kind of knew it, but to have to read those comments was really difficult. And so I would say the faculty are very committed to make sure that every single student feels valued, seen for who they are and, and really keeping expectations high for everyone and creating a culture and a climate where every student feels like they're part of this family. And so that, that was really, that was hard to see. I don't think I was really surprised, but to have to see the words written by the student, that was hard to see. So we've really renewed our, our commitment to each and every student in our district.
So when I was, I wasn't surprised. I, there's a couple of things. Number one, you know, when Andy DePalma from East Con came and presented, it's important to talk and how and say, like, he basically said, what you're seeing for feedback at RAM is consistently being seen by the other districts that they work with. I also have insider information from the context of my wife has been, my wife's a teacher and I hear every day about the challenges that she faces, the, the, the lack of time to do anything. I see how much time she spends on the weekends doing lesson plans, grading. It is a difficult job.
Oh, yeah.
And, and as, as I think even our board members who are educators could, could attest to, it's a different job than it was 25 years ago, when, when probably several of us got into the career. It's, you know, I, I've been in education for 30 years and it's, it's a different job. The expectations, you know, get piled on, but nobody ever says, well, don't worry about doing that anymore. Right? And so when you see that type of thing coupled with the challenges associated that, that we all faced during the pandemic and still are facing in the wake of the pandemic, like it's exacerbated those challenges. And I think it is, it has really impacted how people not just feel about RAM, but also feel about the profession. Like I, I, I've talked to teachers who have said, I'm questioning whether or not I'm going to stay in this profession. We've had teachers leave here and say, I'm going to go be an actuary, right? And, and, you know, but to, to Penny's point, and it is, it is something that, it's, it's a good reminder, number one. And I also would say, prior to the reminder, and I'll just reiterate what I said at the very beginning of this, we knew that this was something that we need to focus on, right? Like we knew based off of the fact that we went through this very, very comprehensive strategic planning process. And we said, this has to be one of the things that we individually focus on. But we also know that all roads, all roads of working towards improvement improve morale, improve climate. It, it's a, it's a huge thing. And, you know, it's something that we are working on now. We're going to continue to work on. And, you know, there are a lot of things that we have implemented this year. I think part of it too is, you know, they did cover a lot of things that have been in existence for a period of time. We wanted to make sure that we included some of those things because it goes to show you that it's not just been like we haven't been paying attention.
Yeah, of course.
So. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Sorry about the length, but we wanted to make sure that we were comprehensive in covering it. So the next agenda item is just an update on the proposed 25-26 budget. Again, we, we had our meeting right before break, the week before break, where the board adopted the budget and we're going to be moving it to referendum. What I wanted to provide everybody with is a copy of our, it's just a one-page sheet that we have created over the past several years. Feedback that we've gotten from, from members of the community, members of the board, staff is, it's very helpful to have this, this type of a cheat sheet that just provides a high level overview about where we currently are, what our budget increase are, what are our priorities, how we're working to reduce the budget increase. And we've, we've kind of come up with this format a couple of years ago when we felt that it was very informative, simple and easy to read. And so this has all the key information. It's very similar to the one that we put together last year. And the intention with this is just document is we're going to do a few different things. We're going to make multiple copies of it, deliver it to each of the town halls of our three sending towns. We're also going to make sure that it gets into the hands of, and gets into the buildings of our elementary districts that feed into region eight so that parents and families who are members of those communities can, can be aware of what it is that we're looking to do and, and the financial aspect of that. And then the last thing too is we're going to work, we are going to make sure that this document gets published in the River East. We felt it's important to make sure that it's as widely publicized as we possibly can, can get it. And certainly just wanted to make sure that we provided it to you. We're excited about where we are. We have our meeting coming up in the beginning of May, the night before the referendum. And again, just wanted to show this back to you all. I can certainly take any questions if people have them. All right. Not hearing any. I will move on to the next item, which is 10.3, which is a personnel report. Yes. Personnel report. So Kelsey Hamel, who is a special education teacher at Ram High School, has resigned effective June 30th, 2025. She's been employed by the district since August of 2015. We certainly will miss Kelsey and wish her nothing but the best as she moves into her leadership position that she has been seeking for quite some time. So that concludes my personnel report.
Well, we learned Scott Budson.
What's that?
Scott Budson as well.
It was a very recent resignation, which.
Yeah, it wasn't in the reports.
Correct. Correct. The next one is a discussion and possible action regarding middle school baseball field ADA compliance project. Michael Schleyhoffer is online. He's joined us online and he can speak to this a little bit more, but I'll just give a quick reminder. I think it was last year, the board decided to address some accessibility issues that we had with the middle school baseball field. This was not something that was mandated, but rather something that was noted when a high school, an evaluation was done of the high school softball field, I think several years ago. But since the inspection was only high school specific, it didn't, we weren't mandated to make the change, but this board is being very proactive and we're saying if we have the funds and we want to make that change. So we went out to bid and I'll let Michael talk a little bit about where we are right now in the process.
Thank you. So we received four bids that were, we received on April 2nd. We reviewed them. We also had LaRrow, LaRrow Engineering review them. We also had legal review them. Out of the four bids, I believe you guys have the, do they have the enclosure, Colin?
Closure 10.4.
Okay. I don't, I don't want to read it word for word if they actually have it. So four bids ranging from 187 all the way up to 300,000. And after the review, the first bid was out. They were missing information. The second bid came in at 237, 800. They have all the necessary paperwork. So they would be deemed the most reasonable qualified lowest bidder. And then the third in line would have been at 264. And then the last one was at 300,000. That did not have all the information that we requested. So at this point, the board would need to approve the superintendent of schools to enter into contract with it. I believe it's Wise Construction Incorporated out of Norwich, Connecticut. And if anybody has any questions regarding any additional steps or be happy to answer them.
Any questions about the bidding process or?
No, I mean, we, Michael, we've been talking about this project for a couple of years now. If, at any time, did we go out for any quotes earlier in the, in the, in the process when we started discussing it? Or is this the first time that we've gotten in?
We, we, we received a construction budget through LaRrow based on what they've been seeing. And that's what we put together as our budget for this. So our budget with contingency was 250,000. So this came in under budget, thankfully.
Okay. That's really what I was getting at. Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
All right.
Is this, is this spread typical, almost 60% higher for largest bid?
It is not uncommon. I'll let Michael say, I don't know if there's a typical, it is not uncommon to see a significant spread. Believe it or not, there's some companies that will bid so astronomically high because they're, they're busy enough themselves. They have enough work and they're just, it's kind of the attitude that they take is just like, let's just throw a number out there and see if anybody bites on it, right? They could end up being the lowest bidder, but they're still making an astronomical amount of money. So to see this type of a spread is not an uncommon thing.
Yeah, I would add that it was similar spread when we were looking at the emergency generator. Very greatly. So, yeah, I would say, and at least in my experience since I've been on facility subcommittee, that's been pretty odd.
All right. Do I have a motion to authorize the superintendent, Dr. Colin MacAmara, to finalize and execute a contract with Huis Construction, Inc. for the Ram Middle School Baseball Field ADA Compliance Project?
I'd like to motion.
Scott, second.
Mark, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? abstained?
All right. Wonderful. So we wanted to also provide the board with an update on a project that has been three years, almost two years, two and a half years in the making. So I think it was my first year working in the district, going through the budget process. One of the things that we put into the capital budget was a materials containment center. It was, it's to, to basically in a neat, visually pleasing way to store landscaping materials, which are currently stored in between the competition field and the baseball field. The board, it went through the budget and we have been in a holding pattern for about two years now. And I don't mean this in a disparaging way, but it's largely just been held up. It has, it's been held up by, by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And again, I don't think it's anything intentional. I think they just have a lot of things going on. But I'm really happy because we, this actually came up at board meeting a couple of months ago. And it, it poked us, Eva, Michael and I, we reached out to the town planner and the town engineer. We met with them a few weeks ago, actually over at the maintenance garage. We reviewed our plan, had some conversation, discussed some things that we, they had some recommendations. And I will bore you with details, but the good news is, is that led to them putting the, the plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I then attended a couple of days later, about a week and a half later, I attended the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and was able to provide some context and details to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The outcome was it was approved and we are moving forward with, with the project. I, I, I think we had like landscapers in here the next day, like cutting down trees and whatnot. The, the, the good news is it also is going to actually enable us doing the project now the way that we're going to do it. One of the things that we had talked about doing was putting a fence up that would have masked a dumpster that currently sits next to the maintenance garage. But with the plan now that we have, actually that dumpster is going to go behind the maintenance garage, which means we don't have to spend $10,000 to $15,000 on a fence for that area. So really excited. As soon as they approved us, I think, you know, again, we, we started ordering things. I, I don't want to misspeak, but Eva can correct me because she likes to do that when I'm wrong. But I think that the prices are going to be a little bit higher now than what we had initially budgeted two years ago. Talking, but I think we have money in our current budget and that's part of the conversation.
There was a cost over on almost $9,000, right, Michael?
Great. Correct. Yep.
So, so anyways, but the good news is moving ahead, which is, which is where we wanted to be for the past couple of years. So I just wanted to provide the board with an update on that. And there's no action that needs to be taken. Moving on to 10.6 is the first read of several policies. I'll just go through them. The, I'm going to go through the first three and. I'm going to go through the first three and group them together. It's bylaw 9342, time and place of meetings for revision. Policy 9340A, agenda for revision. Policy or bylaw 9341, minutes for revision. The reason that we're updating these policies and advising for these bylaws is because the fact that to reflect remote meetings, the fact that we obviously now have the ability to do remote meetings or hybrid meetings, remote and in-person. So all of the changes that are being made are specifically for that purpose. The next policy or bylaw is 9141 committees. This is a board bylaw that needs to be updated to also reflect remote meetings, but by adopting these changes, it will enable us to delete two other policies which are further down the line, 9150 and 9160. The next one is policy 3561, which is code of conduct governing, governing procurements. This is a new policy, or a new policy that is being recommended for adoption by legal counsel. It's one that we currently, currently don't have, but our attorneys at shipment are good one, are recommending that we do adopt this policy. The next one is policy 9131, removal of board officers. Similarly, this is a new bylaw that is being recommended for adoption by legal counsel. Again, currently don't have in existence, but we should. The next two are ones that I had previously mentioned, 9150 subcommittees and 91, 9160 temporary committees. These, of course, can both be deleted with the revision of 9141, which I'd already spoken about. The next one is 9325, email communication. It is an outdated and not required policy, and my, and our recommendation is to delete this policy. And then finally, the last one is 9225A, investments for the deletion. It is an outdated bylaw. It, it, it talks about the superintendent of schools investing the district's money without anybody's permission. I will tell you, I would never consider, it just wouldn't be a good thing for me to do. So, and I, and I would not do that. So it's an outdated policy or bylaw that is unnecessary, and I'm recommending deleting that one. These policies and bylaws all went to the policy subcommittee of, a, a couple of weeks ago. We had a good, good conversation on all of them, and there was no feedback that any changes were needed. So they're all coming to you guys now as a first read. I can do my best to entertain any questions that board members may have about any of them. Again, no action needs to be done in this particular meeting. If there is anything that people think needs to be changed or any concerns, they can reach out to me directly, and we can have an offline conversation. But they, not having any changes, they'll come to the consent agenda for the next meeting for a second read and approval.
I think we might need to discuss 9131. We, we talked about that in the policy committee, I thought we were going to add something about what we meant by officers.
I, I, I'll, I'll go back to my notes, Scott. I'll, I'll take a look.
Yeah, I assumed that was just going to be chair, vice chair, secretary treasurer.
Right, but they did also include subcommittee chairs. That was, that was the.
Oh, okay, so.
Yeah, I don't think you were that mean, but that.
I wasn't, but I, I read the, so I'm getting the ambiguity.
Okay. We are now at the part where I get to stop talking. I will turn it over to Eva for financials.
All right, so in your handouts, you have 10.7A, which is the expenditure revenue report as of March 31st, 2025. There's a projected net favorable position of $505,352. The revenue state of Connecticut has approved $40 million in additional excess funding for 50-year, 2025, the year that we're in. Unfortunately, no more information is received at this time, and the funding for the additional funds is not going to show up until June. So unfortunately, I have no way of projecting what the estimate is for our district. If I hear any more, I will definitely update everyone. As you are aware, the capital improvement on middle school baseball field ADA compliance project, you basically just approved the superintendent to enter into contract. The material containment center, you just heard about that as well, so we're moving forward with that, and everything should be all finalized before June 30th, so that's a plus. And the people services department is still monitoring their spending and changing purchase orders to capture any changes with the IDP process. Are there any questions that the board may have at this time? Okay, thank you. So moving on, 10.7B, which is the food service monthly sales and expenditure. So we have currently reflecting a loss of $48,132.28 for this fiscal year. However, we made gains two months in a row, so that's a plus. Are there any questions that the board may have? Nope, okay. 10.7C is the student activity account, so we balance to the bank. So are there any questions that the board may have on that? Here is none, is the short-term investment fund account, which is 10.7D. We reinvested $1,986.71 as of March 31st, 2025. Are there any questions that the board may have at this time? Thank you very much. Back to you.
So we'll go to the committee reports on facilities.
Facilities, we did not meet on April 8th. Our next meeting is May 13th.
And finance and audit?
We did not meet. Everybody's running for the L. And we have a meeting scheduled, the 13th. We'll see what happens.
All right. Policy?
We did meet, and we see the results.
Yep. Any program or communication?
We did not meet. Next meeting is the 7th.
And Carrie is not here. Here, or cave? Informational items?
So there's, the calendar events are closures 12.1A and 12.1B. I, I've already mentioned the evening of the arts on May 29th. Another great musical production that I would encourage people to attend is the All-Town Jazz Concert, which is an opportunity for students from our three elementary sending districts. They send their, some of their musicians over to us, and, and really all three of the towns perform, plus the middle school band, the high school band. It's a, it's a, it's a really great event. We actually, they have members of the community that also will get up and play, the, the conductors of the different bands from the different schools, and just members of the community will get up and, and join and sing songs. So it's, it's just that, it's a really, it's a, it's a good thing.
Have to figure out how to get Clumpy involved.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Believe me, my, my marketing brain is clicking all the time about, I, I want to try to get them involved with the evening of the arts too, because one of the things that we do with the evening of the arts is not, we're not just showcasing the, the artwork of Ram students, we're also showcasing, we, we recognize and showcase elementary students. They'll come and they'll provide us with their, their artwork and, and they'll, it's, it's really cool. Like, I've seen some of the elementary kids are coming around, they're like showing off their artwork, it's hanging up in the atrium. It's just, it's a great thing. And then just, I mean, as far as the calendar events, the big thing is, is like, all the craziness that happens at the end of the school year, you know, with regards to like proms and senior trips and we have rapid recreation day. And, and I would echo Penny's sentiment, if you, if you're interested in seeing it, it is, it is, I think this district has taken that get out and play day. The administration knows that, that they've heard me say this, we've taken it to like a level that is like beyond any. I, I tell my colleagues, and they're just like, oh yeah, we do this, we do this, we do this, like, oh my gosh, they, they went all in. It is, it is a fun day. So a lot of good stuff going on. The, the next one is just the student disciplinary report for 12.2. There was a typo that Drew pointed out. Drew, thank you for catching that, we appreciate it. It was fixed, so if you have an online version, you see the corrected version, but there was just a couple of numbers that were incorrect with regards to the high school, in-school suspension numbers. But again, it was caught, we fixed it, and the numbers now are accurately reflected. And that concludes my informational items.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Drew, second?
I'll second. Mike Sharon.
Mike Sharon, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained?
No. We're good. Thank you, everybody.